And that on this fall day was a happy summer song.
What a great standup.
Great stand, great stand. We have more back here like. I'm doing double duty tonight because sickness has flipped deep into the heart of several students who got out of school today and they're not here this evening either, so there we go. So I'm going to do a little switch off here from being an alto saxophonist to being a trombonist and we're going to play trumpet hero. Now you're going to find out why I stick to saxophone as much as possible. You ready? One and three and one, two, three.
I was trying to do my notes from the tape. Two or three, I could hear talking.
Speaking of being called to work, would you please join me in a pledge of the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do you want to sign up for public comments? We have the presentation of the annual LSIC meeting and who'd like to go first?
All right. I was going to let ladies go first, but she said since we were the guests. Swat can address the board. First of all, let me thank you for inviting us to come and present our LSIC goals for the year as well as to present you with the report, our annual report on not only our progress, but where we plan to grow in the coming year. I would first like to start off by introducing a few people who have joined me this evening. The first person I would like to introduce is Mr. Brent Griffith, who is my, if you can wave your hands at everybody who recognizes you, one of my assistant principals, who is also over career technical education. I also have my LSIC chair, Mr. Matt Miller, who is a special education teacher at Lincoln County High School. I also have Paula Nelson, if you'll raise your hand there Paula. Ms. Nelson is our theater instructor, but she also does speech and debate as well as forensics, which I think you'll get to also hear a little bit of what they have to offer this evening as well. I also have with me our student body president, Ms. Rachel Elkins. I also have Lindsay Turle, so I can say this right, Turlekowski?
That's good.
There we go. And Molly Hope. We also have, may have a student joining us in the, so she hasn't made a call. But Rachel, when you get close, if you'll come on up, because Rachel has a few things that she would like to do as well. The first thing that I have to present to the board tonight is Lincoln County High School's adequate yearly progress status based upon West Test as well as the other indicators that meet AYP. Lincoln County High School did not meet AYP in last year. Several of those issues I'll be addressing at this time. The first is our reading and language arts scores as well as our math scores did not meet the qualifications to meet AYP. Currently, 33.39% of Lincoln County High School students are proficient in RLA reading and language arts skills as well as the math scores, 28.33%. While those, those numbers are quite startling, let me also say that from the, the cut scores that had changed, which obviously affected the number of students that were at mastery or above mastery, Lincoln County High School had a 10% or 10 and a half percent increase in RLA scores from the previous year. So quite a significant growth that I think is heavily attributed to something else that I'm going to show you a little bit later in the presentation, and that is our writing model. But anyway, we did see a 10 point, 10 and a half percent increase in reading and language arts scores. Our math scores, we had a one and a half percent increase, so naturally, one of our initiatives is to tackle math scores and math proficiency the same way we targeted our reading and language arts proficiency. And that's to come with a numeracy or a math across the curriculum initiative at Lincoln County High School. West Test participation rate last year was at 95%. Our graduation rate at Lincoln County High School currently is 84.44%. And while that does not meet adequate yearly progress, I felt that it was important to note that the state average graduation rate was at 84.34. That in no way justifies the reason that we don't have 100% of graduation, but I did want to indicate that we are, I feel very competitive with other schools across the state of West Virginia. However, the previous year, we had a nearly eight, we had 8.83 percentage point growth from the previous year. So we are making gains in increasing our graduation rate at Lincoln County High School. I think that nearly a 10% increase in graduation rate is something to be commended by the previous administration that was there before I started. And I think that that's also attributed to the Plato program as well as the after-school tutoring program that has been in place. I tell you, I can't speak high enough for our credit recovery initiative that we have for after-school as well as during-school activities for some of those at-risk students. At risk of dropping out, unfortunately, even if they've been there for more than four years, they're still considered in our dropout rate, but we're still meeting the needs of those students as best as we can so that they can earn that high school diploma and become contributing citizens to society. Plans for overall student achievement, attendance rates are being addressed through our local incentive program, which is through our S3 grant that I would like to go into a little bit more detail in a little bit. But some of you may be aware that within the first two days of being at the high school, I did address the attendance rate issue with our students. And last year, according to the state data that I have access to, Lincoln County High School had nearly 25,000 absences last year. And so making sure that students are aware of the reasons that we have rigorous attendance policies in place is very, very important. And I think that we're already seeing the fruits of our labor when it comes to our school initiatives in decreasing that attendance rate when you start looking at statistics compared to this year to last year's rates. Positive behavior support plans developed by teachers, administrators, student teams to reinforce responsible student behavior through our SAT teams and their meeting weekly. And for those students who have attendance issues or behavior issues that are consistently reoccurring, we're making phone calls home, we're sending out letters, we're making sure that those lines of communication with parents are well in advance open so that if, if the next step has to be engaged, that it's not hitting anybody by surprise. And it's also allowing them to go ahead and make plans for improving that at this time. We're utilizing professional learning communities at the high school. And while I would say that we're sort of at the emerging level in implementation, we are well on our way toward truly developing a collaborative culture among teachers with, through our leadership team and then also our content level PLCs. And then finally, like I said, our after-school tutoring program and credit recovery, which is available to all students. And then of course, the use of the activity bus at 6:30, which provides transportation for those students that are engaged in after-school activities, after-school tutoring, credit recovery, or athletics. Being able to provide that has been very, very beneficial. Additionally, our Reading 180 intervention program for those students who have been identified with low reading score or reading ability levels. And let me say that already in the first six weeks, our students have had a growth of over 70 Lexile points that are enrolled in the Reading 180 program, which to be honest with you is quite staggering when I believe that the average growth rate is something like, is it 20 or 25, I believe? Is that, is that correct?
I think that's right.
Yeah, so we're seeing almost, if not tripled, almost quadrupled results with our Reading 180 program for those students that are involved, that are involved in that program. And a lot of that has to be attributed to the instructor. We have a phenomenal instructor, Whitney Coontz, who is the instructor for Reading 180. And we're already starting to implement System 44, which is for some of the other students who are at even lower reading levels at the high school level. We're implementing System 44 and those students are being pulled out by our literacy coach for individual intervention, who is Ms. Robyn Tony. And she has been quite influential in providing some of those resources for the students. And a little bit later, I'd like to go into detail about some other services that she's been really helping us out with. And then of course, writing across the curriculum with the use of the graphic organizer, which was developed by our Lincoln County High School teachers to address our reading language arts initiative, which was to increase student achievement in reading and majorities. But that is something that is used across every single class, every single program area. That's career tech ed, that's fine arts, English, math, science, history, you name it. They utilize our reading, our writing model. And this is an example of the writing model, which was developed by our teachers. It's an easy-to-use graphic organizer that allows the students to be able to organize their thoughts in a clear and precise manner so that they can effectively write speeches and essays. And in fact, you might actually, when you get a chance to talk to some of the students that are here tonight, ask them about the writing model and how it's actually helped them with their writing skills and their, and their abilities as well. Continuing on with our plans to improve Carnegie Learning's top tutor program is also being used for Algebra I, Algebra II, as well as geometry. And this offers a blended delivery of computer-based assignments along with collaborative and cooperative classroom instructions, or instruction. And it is being fully implemented in our math program. And I truly do believe that when used effectively, that this is a good model for our students. And we have some plans for some continued professional development for our math instructors in the way of cognitive tutor. But our math program, our math content area is also developing, as we speak, an initiative for a numeracy and math across the curriculum plan for our high school, just as our English teachers and our English department had done with our writing across the curriculum as well. Plato is used to address student math deficiencies and that for remediation purposes. They can also, in the after-school tutoring program, utilize Plato to meet some of those needs. They can also use cognitive tutor or any of the Carnegie plans for Algebra I, Algebra II, or geometry at home or in the after-school program as well. And as, as I said earlier, the math teachers are developing those, those numeracy and math across the curriculum strategies to be incorporated throughout the entire school. And that will be disseminated through our use of PLCs in the content areas as well. Some of our innovative school programs that we think are really, really working well, our literacy coach, which is Robyn Tony, and I said, like I said before, she's doing some pull-out for System 44 and some individual student intervention. But she working with, she's also working with teachers on improving reading and writing across the curriculum through modeling, coaching, and intervention. But she's also helping some of those weaker teachers who have just started out in teaching, I shouldn't use the term weaker, but those students, those teachers who are just starting out in their profession with teaching strategies, instructional strategies, classroom management, the learning focus model, to make sure that they are on board with our school-wide initiatives. In fact, one of the things that she's going to be doing, in fact, this Saturday is providing training for those teachers at the high school. I think that we have some really good training for all of our teachers coming up, for them to participate in any kind of professional development that they feel that they really need to strengthen their abilities as a teacher. Our technology integration specialist, obviously, you all understand, I think from the past several years, the need for technology integration specialists within our schools. Angie Erling is our TIS and does a phenomenal, phenomenal job. I know that I have to thank the Board of Education because they've allowed for substitutes to come in so we can take some of the new teachers and actually have half-a-day trainings with her throughout the school day so that they can become better acquainted with the technology at the high school in using tools like EdLine, GradeQuick, SmartBoards, document cameras, and those kinds of manipulatives that are essential to 21st century learning. And then finally, one of the newest positions that you all created this past year that is absolutely working miracles at our high school is our in-school suspension teacher. And there again, you know, it, it, the quality of a program is dependent upon, I think sometimes, the instructor. Ms. Mary Mullins is our in-school suspension teacher. And she has sort of my philosophy when it comes to discipline, and that is let's not be punitive, let's try to correct behavior. So in the in-school detention room, she's doing things that are motivating students to correct behavior and as well as to stay on, on target with their classroom instruction. So she has been doing a phenomenal job at that. She's also been doing Saturday school for those students who have had other issues at school in discipline. She's providing Saturday school services for those students as well. And we have started seeing an increase in Saturday school participation as well. Gear-up funding for technology tools and ongoing training throughout the school year has been very influential. Obviously, the learning focus training delivered by in-house trainers, that being Robyn Tony as well as Jonathan Esqu. And those trainings, we have two trainings planned, one is this coming weekend, another one is in January. The S3 grant, which provides $65,000 worth of funding to address school climate issues. We, at the end of last year, we took a poll, a climate survey for the high school. And in fact, last Tuesday, we reviewed that data. And where our plan is to actually disseminate that information to our teachers as well as some of our students so that they're aware of some of the issues that they, they as a group are seeing. And that money is geared toward providing student incentive programs like what some of the students are going to talk to you about in a little bit, which is the Panther Pesos and the initiative, the school trips that are geared around positive attendance, positive behavior, and some of those things. And then finally, EdLine, which is used to improve parent, student, teacher, and administrator, as well as community communication about school events. And I have a little presentation about EdLine coming up. But let's talk a little bit more about the S3 grant. I sort of have a commercial that was developed by the students to highlight our S3 grant as well as some of our initiatives in our climate for Lincoln County High School.
The CHS Positive Climate Incentive Program for 2011-2012 is entitled Proud with Pride. This program offers incentives to award appropriate behaviors that support the school-wide expectations for academics, attendance, and conduct. Lincoln County High School defines violence as any mean word, look, sign, or act that hurts a person's body, feelings, or things, whether this be in person or digitally. The school-wide expectations are be responsible, always try, cooperate with peers and adults, treat everyone with dignity and respect. The school-wide classroom rules are based upon the six P's. Be positive, prompt, prepared, productive, polite, and present. Students will be rewarded for good conduct and then will get a conduct grade based upon the EBF system according to the county grading scale. All students will begin each six weeks' term with 100 points. Points will be deducted as a result of fifth violations. Level one violations will result in a five-point deduction. Level two, a 10-point deduction. Level three, a 25-point deduction. And level four violations will result in a 100-point deduction. All teachers, teacher aides, cooks, custodians, secretaries, bus drivers, and principals will be given five Panther Pride pesos to hand out for good behavior. The Panther Pride pesos will be signed by the rewarding adult, have the name of the student, and a reason for the award. The pesos will be redeemable only by the student being rewarded. It is the student's responsibility to keep their pesos and redeem them for the reward they want. Some of the actions that may be rewarded are Character Education Student of the Month, Unannounced Teacher Check for student preparedness for class, such as a pencil, homework, book, notes, etc. Students caught doing good, no detentions or tardies, and also based on the citizenship grade, which means no BFs. Students will also be rewarded with Panther Pride pesos for being nominated for Student of the Month or Most Improved Student by their teacher. Honor roll, raising their class grade, improving benchmark test scores, improving West Test scores, or meeting mastery or above. ACT scores of 22 or above will also be rewarded. Attendance is another factor in the reward program. Perfect attendance for the six weeks, faithful attendance for the six weeks, and no unexcused absences for the six weeks will all be rewarded. Some of the reward activities that students may participate in are a five-minute early release for lunch, which will cost five pesos. Free homework pass, pencils with the motto, and each of these items will cost pesos that the students must earn. A game room at lunch will also be available, lunch outside, picnic style, popcorn and a movie, admission to class team competitions, free tickets to ballgames, plays, concerts, dances, the prom, a carnival field day, raffle drawings, ice cream socials, field trips, pizza parties, pep rallies, and spirit week activities for sports and the West Test. All of these activities require admission, which are the Panther Pride pesos. Let's make this school year of 2011-2012 one that is filled with Panther pride.
And then the next video that I want to show you really quickly, obviously that gave you a snippet of our S3 grant initiative and providing student incentives. But our next one that we want to talk to you about is EdLine, which is a web-based communication tool for parents.
EdLine has helped me because I can keep up with my assignments as well as how I've done on each assignment. And so it justifies that grade on our report card. I'm not worried about what I'm going to get because I already know my grade and I know if I miss a test, I need to make that up. Definitely help my mom keep track of me and she'll get on and make sure that I'm doing my assignments, I'm turning them in on time. Normally, I log on to EdLine at the beginning of each week and the end of each week to make sure I haven't missed anything in between. Because normally, teachers will update like on weekends, so if you log on like on Monday, normally they have updated grades. I have previously emailed my teachers using EdLine. If I like a project due and I had a question about it, then I would email them on EdLine. And a lot of teachers are really good about getting back to you. Since our EdLine is our homepage, like as soon as I log on to the computer at school, I can see a list of events and it does help me keep track of what is going on at the school. A lot of teachers try to post a description of each assignment beside the grade. So if I have missed a day, it is easy to pick up on what assignment that was and what I'm missing a grade for. Sometimes I'll get on EdLine and see grades and I'm like, hmm, I don't think that was right. And I mean, mistakes are always made, so it's good that a student can see their grade as it's posted because sometimes they'll have the paper and there will be a mistake. You know, if you get a zero on something, you might have questions about that, say, oh, I turned that in. I mean, it does help me communicate with my teachers more about my grades because you see the individual assignment as well as what you receive on that assignment.
EdLine's given me an opportunity to check my grades or the report cards come out to make sure I'm doing well on classes. If I need to make up any work, they're very helpful. I usually use EdLine once or twice a week just to make sure everything's looking good. When I'm absent, they tend to put in zeros instead of, and to show that I wasn't there and have to go make sure everything's put in right. EdLine has helped a lot in making sure I know if I need to work harder, that I can check and see what I messed up on, on my work, that I can relearn what I missed.
It's great for communication with the parents and with the students because I can email students, parents, all at the same time, letting them know there's big projects coming up to remember that there's a test coming up the next day or two so that they have a chance to study. I also use it to communicate what happens in the classroom. So I use footnotes a lot of the time to let them know if a student just did not complete their assignment or if they failed to turn it in. If it's an absence, they can see that and they know that that's something they can make up. I email them for upcoming events. I email them, remember to study over the weekend when we don't, I don't like to usually give tests on a Monday, but sometimes it just happens that that has to be the way it is. And so over the weekend, I send a reminder, not only to the students but to the parents, that don't forget, you have a test on Monday, make sure you study. The calendar page is really important because I can take a look at it and see if there's a day that we're going to have to maybe have shortened time because of maybe early outs or any other types of, of change to the schedule. Motivates them to come and seek me out to find out if there's anything they can do or if there's anything, and usually that's whenever I get a chance to say, okay, are you actually taking this home every night? And just going over it for five minutes, whatever we do in class, because that's going to make a big difference. And so that leads into the conversation because they've checked the grades on EdLine. And so that leads into the conversation, because they've checked the grades on EdLine.
So that gives you a little bit of perspective of some of the things that we've been doing to make sure that, one, we're increasing, or trying to better the school climate and the culture at Lincoln County High School, but at the same time, we're also trying to make sure we communicate with parents, teachers, and students effectively. The next thing that I would like to do is I would like to introduce Ms. Elkins, Rachel Elkins, to come up here and talk a little bit about our Career and Technical Education, which she is actually one of the students who participates in one of those programs. And they also have the program that you all put forward for the seniors, so you might bring their attention to that.
Many of these programs help students that don't achieve well in other areas. Like if a student isn't necessarily a high achiever in English, they may find their niche in some of these Career and Technical Education classes. Especially the automotive class, they have actually gone on to compete and win several awards through Skills USA, which is a program that lots of the Career and Technical Education classes participate in. I'm actually a member of the Graphic Design class, and we put together the programs for the senior football game, as well as designing t-shirts that you can see in the community. We designed several different posters and banners. Center Point Baptist Church actually called for a banner. So it's a way for our school to reach out to the community in a different way that's not necessarily reading or math. It's putting those skills to use in everyday life, because you have to know how to logically think through some of the nursing classes, or the welding classes. You have to use these skills, and a lot of the students that wouldn't go to college otherwise are able to see that they have careers going to two-year colleges, or straight out of high school, because they've done something hands-on. And it makes a difference in the lives of students who aren't, you know, the A-Roll students. It's the kids that you don't see out in the community any other way, and it's really, it has made a big difference so far in Lincoln County High School. And then the student organizations. I'm actually president of National Arts Society as well, so killing two birds with one stone. The organizations we have, we have National Arts Society and Fellowship of Christian Athletes. Skills USA is the organization that the CTE classes participate in, and it's their competition that they work towards the entire year. FFA is a huge part of our school. You, Mr. Sax, used to be involved with that, so. And it brings a lot of people to our school to see some of the auctions we have with the equipment, as well as the greenhouse, where they sell plants throughout the year. I know some of the students in FFA have also participated in shows where they will show, like the pig that they raise, so it's also another way for kids to get out in the community, and the community to interact with us. And then, we have some speech and debate team members here that are going to perform for you. Let me turn speech and debate over to Paula Nelson, and she can explain. And then I think we have Molly Hoak doing some of her humorous interpretation, as well as Alyssa Hager doing a portion of original oratory, so.
A year after the new school opened, we started a speech and debate team up again. And as many of you are well aware, we did have a strong speech and debate organization in Lincoln County at Duval High School for many years. In fact, back in the eighties, when I was much younger, I was learning at the feet of the master, Ms. Wiley, and her team took us under their wing, and we got to the point where we were beating them after five years. During the time that we have had this speech and debate team at Lincoln County High School, I started out with three kids and a county car, and now we have a team that is 17 members strong. It's kind of a large class for one period of the day, but we handle it. These students can go out in any situation and handle themselves. They've learned so much. I've had students who've gone to the national competitions in Omaha, Nebraska, got to fly on a plane, go out and compete with children from all over the United States. Last year, Alyssa Hager, and Alan Ellis, and Nick Browning, who is not here with us tonight, actually qualified, won the right to go to the National Catholic Forensic League Finals in Washington, DC. Once we got there, we practiced, and we did some things too that students should have the opportunity to do. We turned a map over to Nick and said, take us on the metro, we're going to go see the Holocaust Museum. And because we had our team pop off with us, Mr. Hager, we got in the Holocaust Museum to see behind-the-scenes things. We have a lot of parent involvement in our program, and it's growing every day. We have students who graduated, who come back and help coach the students, and we have some of those students who were Becky Wiley's students come back and help us as well. We were given $23,000 by our representatives in Charleston, and these children do not have to do fundraisers. If a child needs a suit, we buy it. If a child needs anything to be on this team, we will take care of it. They do not have to pay to eat, we feed them, we lodge them. We do everything we can to give them the opportunity to do the things that will make them better citizens. There is not a day that goes by in their lives that they won't use something that they learned in speech and debate. Is that not right? That's right. These students can speak for themselves. Rachel is our captain of the debate team. She has been with us for quite some time. She's going to tell you a little bit about some of the things that she does. Lindsay Terelikowski, she won big last year doing a sales speech on Etch-Asketch, of all things. And that's something you can use. You never know when you're going to have to sell Ginsu knives out there to feed your family. Molly went to speech and debate camp this summer, as did Rachel and Alan, and they learned so much that they could bring back to our students. In fact, Molly was asked to audition for a position on the George Mason Speech and Debate Team, and she was invited to join. So we are really proud of that, because they're number two in the nation in speech and debate. And she's interested in television and communication. Olivia just joined us this year, and she went to her first tournament last month, well, last week, and she's determined she's going to win now. Alan, he does debate, and he can switch from one type of debate to the other. Right now, he is the person who is really working with the debate team. That's where all our boys are. We can't get them to get out of that safety zone. So, without going any further, Rachel can give you a little bit of discussion on what she does, and then Alan, and then we'll go with Ms. Lindsay, and then Molly, and then Alyssa. And of course, if Olivia wants to say anything, she's welcome to do that too. What the funny thing is, I've had her mother and her two aunts in school, and her aunt went to the Nationals in the ABC Committee, so I feel really old.
I would definitely like to credit Speech and Debate for the ability to stand up in front of you today, kind of on the fly, and just go with whatever slide Mr. Sax wanted me to, so definitely shout out to Ms. Nelson, Ms. Nelson there. But I've known Ms. Nelson for a while, and she kind of conned me into Speech and Debate. And once I started, I couldn't stop, it's kind of contagious. I do debates, I do different types of debate. Alan and I went to camp together as debate partners, and we kind of taught the news students a little thing or two, but I'm the team nerd. I do extemporaneous speaking. It's where you build a file on news articles throughout the month, and then you go to a room, you pick a topic, and you construct a speech in 30 minutes, and then you stand up and give your seven-minute speech without any note cards, just based on the information you've retrieved from your file. So it's a good way to prepare me for the future, and it also keeps me in touch with current events. I do impromptu speaking, which is a shortened extemporaneous speech. You go into a room, you pick a topic, you have five minutes to think about it, and then you give a five-minute speech. And this year, I think I'm going to reach out and have our captain of speech, Molly, to help me a little bit with some acting pieces, but she does more of the acting part, and she'll tell you a little bit about that, but here's Lindsay.
Lindsay's going to show you a little bit of her speech from last year that she did on Etch-Asketch, okay?
Let me paint you a picture. You're taking a hike in the woods, you look through your binoculars and see a cute little blue bird perched high in a tree. Everything is going great, until you hear a rustle in the bushes behind you. Your heart starts beating faster and faster. You slowly turn around and find that standing right there behind you is none other than Bigfoot himself. He doesn't seem to see you, so you slowly back away, but you want proof. You reach in your pocket for your phone, it's not there. Your camera, nowhere to be found. All you have is an Etch-Asketch. You sketch the beast as he stands, sparks flying from your fingertips as you twist and turn the knobs. This very sketch leads to scientific discoveries. Your name's all over the morning paper. You win a Nobel Prize. They make a movie in your honor. Okay, so maybe this story is a little far-fetched, but hey, anything is possible with an Etch-Asketch.
I'd just like to say, since I'm captain of the Forensic Team, and on behalf of everyone, we are so honored to be recognized kind of tonight. And we've grown from what we, as Ms. Nelson said, we've grown from what we started out to be. Like last year, three of our students went to Nationals, and two of our students, me and Tyler Garden, who graduated last year, reaped in four state championship titles. And it's just been so much fun. And I'll be sad to leave the team this year, but hopefully I'll get some awards on the way. So I guess right now, I'm going to show you HI, since that's kind of my event. I was state champion at HI last year. And what HI is, is humorous interpretation. You take a TV show, a script, a play, whatever, you cut it down to 10 minutes, and you perform it. And I guess, since I don't really remember a lot from last year's HI, I have an HI this year, I won first place at last year's, last week's competition. So I'll do a little excerpt from that. I don't really think I'm crazy at first, but just bear with me, I play many characters. So, okay. Hi, my name's Maria McConville, thank you so much for seeing me. Thank you for coming in. Any questions? I just, I never know what to do with my hands. Do what you normally do with your hands. 'Tis but thy name that is thy enemy, thou art thyself. Thou art not a monarch, you, what's the monarch? What is that? I'm sorry, just, I told you I always struggle with my hands. So I thought this is what I do when I talk to boys, so I'll just try that. Why don't you try something else? Like what I'm telling you, I always struggle with my hands. Try something natural. Oh Romeo, Romeo wherefore thou Romeo? Okay, well that was different. It just seemed natural, you know, because she's in love. All right, well, thank you so much for coming in.
So, so as Rachel mentioned before, her and I do debate. And since I'm kind of teaching all the debate people right now, since Rachel's been captain, busy with everything else, I've been walking back and forth between public forum and Lincoln Douglas. Lincoln Douglas Debate was created by Abraham Lincoln and Douglas, when they would have these policy debates, and it was all about philosophy. So in keeping with that style, Lincoln Douglas debating in the Forensics League is all about philosophy. It is a clash between a moral and or values, and another person's moral and values. So it's up to the judge to figure out whose value criterion is superior. It's an interesting part of thinking, because it gets you to wonder about philosophy. You'll enter a topic, and you'll have an extremely strong opinion one way, but as soon as you start researching, and you learn more about these philosophies, it changes. For one, since we did animal rights, that was our last topic, and you think immediately animals should have rights, and that it's, you know, justice requires this, but as you start studying the literature about it, you suddenly begin to realize that it might not be essential to that. So that's one of the joys of Lincoln Douglas Debate. Now, switching over to public forum debate, this is in keeping up with an extemporaneous' current event style. You get a topic every month, and it'll be about something that's happening in the world today. The topic we had just now was private space exploration, private sector investment in human space exploration versus the public sector. So, should we shut down NASA? This is all about stats, figures, news agencies, evidence, all that sort of thing. So that's just a basic idea of what we do, and it's really thought-provoking.
Hello, everyone, I'm Alyssa Hager, and I went to Nationals last year, and I actually quarter-finalled, which means I was top 14 in the nation. And last year, I did declamation, which is basically a pre-written speech, and you memorize it, and you give it in a way that that person, you would think that that person would give it. And then this year, I'm doing sales, and I'm selling Hershey's. And I'm also doing OO, which is what I'm going to do for you today. And it's basically a speech that you write, that's 10 minutes long, and you pick a topic, and my topic is online. And you basically talk about, like, how it affects us, or you came up with three main points that you think would be mostly beneficial to your speech, and that's. It's bright and early Monday morning, and little Billy is peacefully sitting in his chair, when all of a sudden, Mrs. White, his teacher, announced for everyone to take out his or her homework. Billy looked around nervously, knowing that he didn't do his, stupid Cartoon Network. When Mrs. White asked him, where is your homework? He told her that his dog ate it. Little did Billy know that Mrs. White had his parents on speed dial. He didn't have a dog. In fact, his dad is deathly allergic. Poor little Billy. Something so small turned into something so large. Being charged with fraud 10 years later, never having a home, and eating leftover Tic Tacs off the ground. Rarely does this happen, but you get the point. Whenever we lie, it's never left at just one lie. It becomes a web of lies, entangling us in a false state of mind. But before we get caught up, why do we lie? How is it affecting our society, and what are the consequences for lying? So, bang goes the knife command. Apparently thou shalt bear false witness, since we all feel the need to wiggle our way out of sticky situations with petty, practical, perfect lies. We all know that lying is sometimes used to prevent ugly situations from happening, and while we may think that we are helping others along the narrow road of indiscretion, we are only mapping a route for ourselves. But aren't we really hurting ourselves? The 2009 movie, The Invention of Lying, creates a world completely devoid of falsehoods, where everyone tells the complete and honest truth all the time, and everything a person says is taken at face value. The premise is humorous, because it's so contrary to the world we live in. Can you imagine breaking up with someone because of his or her looks? Or admitting to your boss that you read his private emails? What about confessing to your wife that her butt does look big in those jeans? Since our society is somewhat more polite, we have developed new ways to beat around the bush. In the Journal of Basic and Applied Psychology, researchers found that nearly 60% of all subjects lied at least once during a videotaped 10-minute conversation. Researchers also reported that all subjects claimed to be completely truthful throughout the conversation, but when watching the playback tape, they were the conversation, but when watching the playback tape, they were astonished that they had said deceitful things. That's because lying is usually beneficial to our self-esteem or self-preservation. We truly desire to be the best possible versions of ourselves, so much that we may lie about our skills or accomplishments to make others respect us more. Sometimes we do it to avoid hurting one's feelings, which allows others to maintain their high opinion of us and doesn't become consumed with thoughts of breaking our face. In essence, we lie because it works. And when lying ceases to work and has more consequences than advantages, only then will some people tell the truth.
And that's just a taste of the many events that these children did. We invite you to come see us. We mostly travel to Parkersburg for our tournaments, because that is the central location for all the teams that participate. Our first tournament, which was novice, for beginners only, we placed fifth out of 12 schools as a team this past weekend, third out of 11 schools, not far behind Wheeling Park and Huntington High. And they have huge teams. So our little team is quite good. Over 80 some awards individually last year. So I think they need another round of applause.
And I would like to take this opportunity to apologize again to the team. I had time earlier this year to go. We had some miscommunication, because we had wanted, you know, to bring them in, to recognize them, and it was no fault of theirs, it was my fault. It just happened, and I did go over and apologize, and I want, you know, everyone to know, parents that are here. And I especially wanted them to know, and you guys to know. But we will be bringing you back to recognize you. But we so appreciate you, and we're so proud of you. And I didn't want you to think that we didn't appreciate what you guys have done, and the wonderful job that you have done, Mrs. Nelson, through the years. And, you know, but we will be bringing you back to give you something, to show our appreciation.
This past tournament, we competed in a new event that was group storytelling, and actually, everyone, Dylan Sro, was a group, and we told a story. And we ended up winning a huge pumpkin, it's a traveling trophy, so, yes.
Is it real?
No.
No, it's a trophy.
You can put a candle in it, and it lights up, everything.
Well, I can just, let me just say thank you for indulging us there. And I have to say that it's students like these that really make what we do so enjoyable and rewarding, because I think that it is a prime example of some of the things that we're doing in Lincoln County are truly, truly meaningful for so many students. And these are just a wonderful representation of some of the things that are going on in Lincoln County High School, and of course, obviously with our speech and debate and our forensics. Just phenomenal job. So thank you again, students. So I'll try to quickly go through this here, but improving education with, it's supposed to be your support, it was cut off a little bit there by the panther, but a couple requests that we have on behalf of the LSIC are school staffing. Our requests include that no reduction in staff at Lincoln County High School for the upcoming year. We truly feel that right now we are already at our minimum with some of the programs that we're having. We're actually just now starting to see some great successes, and it would be a shame to have to have a reduction in force, and then to see some of those gains that we've made, you know, sort of backtrack. To maintain or increase academic war and support staff to meet, so that we can continue to meet the needs of Lincoln County High School students. One being our in-school suspension teacher, which has been a phenomenal resource this year. Our literacy coach, which is providing that extra resource for our teachers that they need it to improve instruction, improve instructional strategies, classroom management, as well as individual student pullout. It would be helpful to have an increase from one of our half-time secretaries that we have to a full-time. And meeting, if you've ever tried to call the high school during the school day, sometimes it's very, very difficult to get through, and I will tell you that that's because all four secretaries are trying to intercept phone calls and take care of those. And as a result, maybe it would be our financial secretary at times that has to work over, or some of our other secretaries end up having to work over for overtime, just to get basic things done that need to get done to make sure that the school is functioning properly. So I do believe that by creating that halftime into a full-time position would meet the needs of the entire school, as well as just the functionality of everything. And also, last week alone, we increased our number of meals served by almost 850 meals. That was just last week. And so we are starting to see significant gains in the participation rate of our students with student meals. So, and I can tell you that our cooks are absolutely worked to death, and it would be very, very beneficial to try to increase the support that those cooks need in meeting the needs of serving not one, not two, but three meals a day. And that, it actually, will be actually for it before too long with our after-school program, but they're serving breakfast, a grab-and-go, a lunch, and then they're getting ready to start after-school meal programs for those students who need to participate in that as well. Facility needs, they've already started on the school sign, but, you know, making sure that that actually comes to fruition. I know you all have been working very diligently on that for the past several years, but it would, I think we're almost there. I think we're waiting on some block to be laid, but we really would like to be able to have that completed. We have noticed, noted some issues with lighting, and I've been working with Mr. Midkiff, and Mr. Midkiff's been helping me with this. But I felt that it was perfect to make sure that we included this. Some of the ballasts that are with the lights, if there's incorrect light bulb that is used, it's causing the ballast to go bad. Also, when the school was constructed, there was some issues with some of the underground wiring, the way, this is the way it's been interpreted to me, that the way it was installed was not correct, and so the wiring has actually gone bad in some places. And so, for example, on the southern community end, you'll notice that the sconces that light the walkway, that has to actually be rewired, and I know that the county is working on that as well. So, basic things, but we want to make sure we target them, and we don't want to let them go, because we want to make sure that we continue to take care of our new school. Landscaping, it's a huge school, and it's sort of the pride of Lincoln County. One of the things that we think that would be beneficial is to have a small county budget set aside just for grounds and landscaping to be not only maintained, but maybe to increase something very small every year. And if you notice, that that's sort of been coming from community support so far, with the trees that are lining the driveway, we would like to finish that out, but also the shrubbery, the bushes. But on an average yearly basis, we're probably looking at about $1,500 to $2,000 just in March, that the school is having to have come out of their budget. So it'll be very, very beneficial to have some county support in providing some of those needs. And like I said, I think it really builds community pride. If you haven't been over there recently, you'll see some of the landscaping that the students have done recently for fall decorations. It is really something to look at. For those board members who can make our RISA 2 meeting tomorrow, I hope that you take special note of what the student government and National Honor Society have been doing with landscaping. And then finally, some classroom needs, TV upgrades to deliver school broadcasting in the mornings. I think that if we were able to have an initiative where perhaps we were to start putting every year, maybe in a core content area, some TVs that automatically come on as soon as the news broadcast, which is the morning announcements, are delivered. That way, we're ensuring that every single classroom is participating in classroom announcements. I know some schools have, it's a little sensor that goes on the TV, which turns it on automatically and programs it to the correct station, would be something that would be very beneficial for our school. At the same time, if the principal wants to make a message or something like that, he just presses a button, the TV comes on, and it's the principal or the secretary or whoever needs to deliver the message. And at this time, I want to thank you and open the floor to any questions. I really do appreciate, I know that this was a very lengthy LSIC presentation, and I'm pretty sure that I owe Ms. Ferguson some money now, because I think we had a bet that I wouldn't go longer than 20 minutes, but... I think I owe her another $50. So at this time, I would like to entertain any questions that you may have regarding our LSIC, or anything else that you think is important to ask at this time regarding the high school.
Just have one question. On the ISS teacher?
Yes, sir.
What are the number of students that we typically serve in that?
Well, on a daily basis, we can serve 10 to 12 students in in-school suspension, and that's because of the accommodations of the room size. And I can tell you that on a daily basis, she has 10 to 12 students.
Has 10 to 12.
In fact, one of the things that, in fact, I was talking with Mr. Midkiff about this today, with our discipline plan that we have put forth in order to make sure that we have a environment that is conducive to learning, and making sure we have a rigorous discipline policy, we are using in-school detention, which is, we don't call it suspension, because that actually is something that counts against your attendance rate, it's in-school detention. But that, those students that are either serving a half-day or a full day are for disciplinary infractions that could be level twos or level threes at some times. But teachers have the ability to assign students to lunch detention, as well as if they're tardy for a class. Tardies and attendance rates were absolutely, huge last year. And so I can't, I was trying to find the right word, but, yeah. And so, if they're assigned lunch detention, but what we're noting right now, and it's an issue that we're trying to tackle, is follow-up on those students going to lunch detention. Because what's happening is, is they're thinking that, well, if I don't go to lunch detention, then I'm not gonna, you know, it's not a big deal. So if they skip lunch detention, we usually give them one chance to make it up. If they don't make up the lunch detention, then they have after-school detention. If they have after-school detention, they skip after-school detention, then they receive Saturday school. If they refuse Saturday school at that point, then it becomes a one-day suspension. And so there's probably been a small influx in suspensions at Lincoln County High School since I've taken over, but the thing is, is that it's over these minor things that have initiated, that they haven't followed through with, like lunch detention, and then after-school detention, Saturday school, and it's just basically taking responsibility for their actions. So, and we're just now starting to see increased rates of lunch detention and after-school, so that we don't have to follow through with those suspensions. So we're really, I mean, we're very cognitive of the fact that we don't want to suspend students, but the problem is that we've tried all these other things, and it's coming to those, but...
Any more questions?
Next LSIC report will be from Hamlin, PKGWA.
Good evening. Actually, I'd like to go behind Mr. Sax, because I'm notorious to be shorter than him, and not take as long in meetings and such. First, I'd like to introduce the staff that I have with me this evening. Ms. Chastity Graham, who is my interim principal, who's serving right now. And Ms. Gilda Hall Robinson, who is our middle school special ed teacher. I have Ms. Holly Barker, who is our eighth grade English teacher. Ms. Sue Sauer, third grade teacher, now elementary. And Mr. Frank Corning, who's our technology and creation specialist. And I have Katie Woodall, a student with me, and she'll be speaking here in just a few minutes. First off, you'll see here on our, that our West test scores, we did not unfortunately make AYP this last school year. But as you see on there, we did not make AYP through any of the assessment standards in math. We did not meet those in any of the subgroups. We did meet those in reading language arts through safe harbors, except for our low SES. We had a West test participation rate of 98.53%, and our 2010, 2011 school, I mean, attendance rate was 98%. We actually, in reading language arts, did improve our test scores by 8.9 points, but our math scores dropped just a little over one point last year. So there are lots of ways that we are working to improve our test scores, and some of those things are up there, here, up on the screen right now. Our Read 180 intervention program, and our Mathia, in Carnegie Learning, we're using in our middle school. We also have, using our assessments of both our teachers and our students are analyzing their own data off of benchmark assessments, West test, DIBELS, there's plastic math and reading inventories, inventories of those are guiding their instruction. Our students are using data notebooks, they're making their own goals, and looking at their own data to make their own SMART goals to drive their own instruction. We're using Power Write, the Lincoln County model. West Virginia Rights, learning focus lesson plans and strategies are continued to be used. We have a comprehension strategy of the month that we use, and a math strategy of the month. We are using support for personalized learning in our classrooms, and that is happening right now, and small group instruction. We are also doing study test talks with our students, and that will continue through the year. Something we're very proud of, we have developed a very strong leadership team this year. It's grown in size, and I just feel it's a very positive thing for our school, and it has produced positive PLCs and collaborative teams through our teachers. We also, our school improvement, we're on a school improvement grant, and so we're working closely with RISA. Kelly Watts has been out to work with us with our data talks and our collaborative talks using data, and actually, she's gonna be here this week to work with our teachers and our PLCs. We've had some strong, built some strong partnership in our community. These are just, these are the ones that we've built that strong commitment with. This summer, we had a luncheon with community members and businesses, and we came together and had a presentation of what they could do for us and what we could do for them. And they could choose anything from coming in and reading to our children, or just working with our students, or as much as funding some of our rewards programs. So we've had a lot sign up for that. We, oh, this is a video. This is some of our collaborative teams working for our teachers. That was actually a Saturday workday for our SIG grant. It was a day that we chose our school motto and school song, and it was a really fun day. It was probably one of the best days that brought our staff together. You know, after we consolidated into one school, it was very hard for our elementary teachers and our middle school for us to come together as one. But I feel, especially after last year and that day, we just, we just came together, and we've worked great ever since. So that was a wonderful day for us. We do have our three focus areas and our SMART goals. Our SMART goals come from our SIG grant, but our three focus areas for our school, we decided, of course, because of our math scores and mathematics, and to continue working diligently on our writing and to extend on our extended refined lessons. Our SIG grant goals were to increase our reading language arts and our math scores up 3%, to build a strong culture, because we felt like, well, we did, we had, we did a culture survey with the State Department last year, and we were a balkanized staff. And we have recently had another culture survey done for the state, and it just did a whole total flop over. I mean, we grew so much. So I just feel that the positiveness at our school this year is just wonderful. We also, in that culture, probably for the last five years, we have not had a PTO at Hamlin. We just could not get it to people to come out, couldn't get them together. This year, I'm proud to say, we have a strong PTO, and we have about 30 people come out. And we're having our turkey dinner again on the 13th of November, so if you remember Hamlin's turkey dinner, you're welcome to come out for that. But it was very exciting for me to sit in the PTO meetings and tell the parents that just, it was just wonderful to see them. And I've extended the welcome that they are welcome to come in and read to their students, their kids in the classrooms, and I've seen more and more come in and read, and... and they just feel welcome here again, and I like that. And then in our climate, it was to reduce our BIF by ten percent. But this year, when Mr. Sax was here in the beginning of the year, we started using the Educator's Handbook, and I really liked that. He introduced that to us. And that is a way for us to put our discipline referrals online, and we can track those discipline referrals, and we can kind of keep more monitoring check on those. There again, our reading language arts and our math, for our teachers, of course, they're diligent, working on DO-K, which is knowledge questions to use higher-level thinking questions. We also, in our culture, we developed a program that we developed, it was called the We Care Program. It was where teachers would take two to three students apiece, and they would mentor those students throughout the year, and it could cover anything from academics to attendance to behavior. And they would just work with them, give them that special need, you know, need that they needed, and let them know that we care about them. We also, I'm gonna go back just a second. Also, we had lots of days this year, dress-up days, just fun days, not fun days, we're still learning, but fun days for the kids to know they can dress up. We had a Wild West Wednesday, and everybody dressed up in cowboys, you know, and cowgirls. During our drug prevention week, we had dress-up to spread different themes for the week, and the kids just really loved that. So, so right now, I'm going to let Ms. Katie Woodall come up and talk about our awards and our student behavior program.
So Panther Pigs, those, huh? Wonder where that came from? It's about time they realized we need punishment, we need rewards instead of punishment. I remember my friend Amber saying those exact words when our teachers first unveiled our new rewards program the first few weeks of school. And the rest of the students agreed. Now, we can't wait till the end of the month, where we can go to our big reward that our students, that our teachers and staff have planned for us, and our new Bobcat Store excites us just as much. This new program is based on two major components, Bobcat Bucks and Rewards Points. At the beginning of each month, a student has a total of a hundred Rewards Points. They must obtain a total of eighty points to attend the big reward at the end of the month. A student may lose points by, say, being tardy for class. This would cause a deduction of five points to be deducted from their total. The number of points deducted is affected by the act performed. Bobcat Bucks, however, work like this. Every Bobcat Buck is pointed to a Reward Point. This way, students can buy back points that they've lost throughout the month. Best thing about the Bobcat Bucks is, if you've already acquired your eighty, your minimum of eighty points, then you can also have the option of shopping in the Bobcat Store. Fun new items are placed in the store every month, so that students can trade for Bobcat Bucks. You can get Bobcat Bucks by simply showing good citizenship or improving on test scores. Each of these components play a very important part in encouraging our students every day to be successful in writing. Now, I'll give each of you a Bobcat Buck, so you too can be a part of our new rewards system.
Just let us know when you wanna come spend it. Thank you, Katie. That's also part of our responsible student program. Kind of burn second grade, you can see that it's kind of their rules, follow their point. We do celebrations, like Student of the Month, where they get certificates and they are called out, and also our AMV Honor Roll. We do community involvement, different programs of the year. We're getting ready to have our Better State Program on the tenth. We also have Christmas programs and character ed, we just had a character ed education with our elementary counselor. They kayed through fourth grade sang songs, and it was all about character education. It was really good. We had a great parent turnout for that. We also have career days in both our elementary and our middle school. Here's just a short video on our middle school.
So, gentlemen, which ones have been your favorites so far? Which ones have you been to?
DNR.
The DNR, what does that stand for to you?
Department of Natural Sciences.
And what did he do?
He showed us, he showed us about the way, and how they, remember they come from?
Who said the other one?
Culture.
The roll trigger, the chicken gun? What did you think about that?
That was very nice, too, because we were able to utilize a lot of our own community members and parents at our school. This last year, just some examples of things we did. We had, we had book studies, but on this one, we actually did blogging online. So we read it ourselves, and then we went online and blogged as teachers. They really enjoyed that. This is just some different examples of things that we use in our school, like our data notebooks, our data blogs, just different bulletin boards and things like that. There's our crazy but wonderful staff. We also participated in the IPI, which is Instructional Practices Inventory. We did that last year in January, and then, again, we just send it because we had our staff trained, two members of our staff trained to do, I mean, to do those here, and we will continue those throughout the school year, probably do at least two more. We saw some different, some movement in that. We did see a little bit more teacher-led instruction, but of course, it's the beginning of the year, and you have more of that in the beginning of the year, so we have to see that change. But we did see a decrease in student work with teacher non-engaged, and I think it opened up, just the talk of that last year with Kelly Watts from RISA, opened our staff up to what they were seeing and what we would see in the classrooms. And this is just a little video of Ms. Ken Spasham in her classroom.
Welcome to our fifth grade classroom. We're looking at all of the things that we have posted and what's around the room. My goal for my classroom is to maximize student learning and allow students to learn in a comfortable learning environment that they feel their part of. We're looking at the lesson essential question, followed by the bell rung. And we try to integrate technology into all of the areas as we can. We have students in cooperative reading groups and learning teams for math and reading. We see student work posted around the room, as well as tools that help our students learn, like depth and knowledge questions, where we're trying to incorporate higher-level thinking and increased vocabulary. Our reading unit is posted, and this helps the students see where they've been and where they're going. Math, we've got some clue words to help students focus in on what they're doing in relation to multi-step problems. Student work is posted, they like to look at each other's work displayed. We're looking at computers. We try to integrate as much technology as we can in our classroom. And last, we have the student writing model.
That was actually our elementary music teacher wanted to make that video, so kids had a really good time with that. Here's some more students. Wonderful students. This is just challenges for this year and upcoming years. Of course, we've had a lot of administrative changes, funding down the road, things that we will need and continue to need to do, things that we started, professional development, refinement of our PLCs, greater level teams, and increased staff engagement. So as I, you know, get ready to close, I just, first off, I want to say to Ms. Lucas, the board, and to the curriculum team, I want to thank you for several things that you have done for us this year and added to our staff, allowing us to have the Reading 180 Intervention Program and teacher, additional special ed teacher for us, that has made a big difference in our middle school, the ways that we can service our special ed population. It is wonderful to have a half-time food service secretary. For the last four years that I've been assistant principal, I was pretty much stuck in the office for three and a half hours while lunch was going on. I could not get out and be the leader I needed to be in the classrooms because my secretary was down here in the lunchroom. This has afforded me to be able to be out into the rooms and doing the job that I need to do, so I thank you all very much for that. Our additional cook that we have here, it's been wonderful and a big help for our population of our students. I deeply appreciate that I have an intercom in my elementary building, again, and the interventionist that I think is going to be hired that we have. So all of those things, I thank you all very much. It has been a great, positive thing for our school, and I hope that can continue next year. Just a couple of needs that I'd like to see, even though we have the one interventionist coming, I still feel with our staff, we would, we need another one. We need at least one more interventionist to do what we need to do for our students, to raise achievement and those critical skills that we need to work on with those students. So, and the only other thing is, I'd like to see, my hallway's painted. I'd love to see a painting crew come in maybe over the holidays at some point and give us a good paint, paint job. Our cafeteria looks wonderful, but our hallways need a good painting, if that can be done. I did ask my reading coach, Jenny McClung, to just type out a little thing about her concerns with our interventionists that we need. I'm just gonna give you a copy of that, I'm not gonna read it, but that way you will have that. And then I'll give you all one, too. And at this time, I'll just open the, do you have any questions or concerns? Mr. Sax, I think I will be collecting all that.
I already gave you the dollars.
I know, but fifty's coming. Thanks so much for coming to our school.
See if you have any questions. Thank you. Everybody, give me your money. I'd like to thank you, Ms. Ferguson, for all the hospitality, for all the food. Yes, if that's all we have, if y'all wanna stick around, you can. If not, we're gonna continue with the meeting. Would you all like to have maybe a five-minute break? I make a motion we take a five-minute reset.
Started this process, we had seven inactive voters, and we have over seventy-two-hundred now. So that's real exciting to get to that. It took lots of hours and a lot of manpower and things, but we're there. If you look at our active voters, we're down to eleven-thousand-two-hundred-and-five now. So that was some good numbers. Now, what people needs to understand is, if they look at a poll book, it shows active and inactive. The inactive people will show on our numbers in our system. Those people will show for four years. So they need to understand, you know, if they come in and say, "Well, you know, this person's already gone, we told them that," you know, they'll just have to look and see if they're marked as inactive. If someone has not voted in four years and they've been marked as inactive, they can still go and turn theirself back to active if they vote, we have an election coming up in October, or if they vote next year, you know, in twenty-twelve. That'll help them get back to the active status. And we've sent out notes to all seventy-two-hundred and some, so they all got letters sent to them. We went ahead and sent even to the people who hasn't voted. Last time they voted was in '08, just as a reminder to let them know, make sure you vote at least in twenty-twelve, or you would be moved to that inactive, because that would be their four years there. So we just sent out some reminders to them. We have canceled over a thousand people, and we found that from old estate files, going through old, the newspaper, going through the obituaries, knowing for sure that that is that person, especially if there's data burst, things like that, different reasons. Notification, after we sent these letters out, came back from Kentucky or North Carolina, showing that the voter is there now, so that helped. And then we have purged around a little bit over thirty-three-hundred people. I'm excited over the idea of maybe there being less precincts. It would be easier and for us to manage and to maintain and make sure that whenever we cut that down, we really look at what poll workers we bring in, make sure we bring in, you know, ones that's gonna be dependable, and it'd be easier for us finding poll workers and things if that lessens. And it's also gonna be easier to place someone in the right precinct, instead of trying to figure out exactly where they live. When they give me these new street names, I don't really know where those, they have to tell me where it used to be, and just different things like that. So I'm excited about that.
I think one thing that should be noted, just for the newspaper to let the public know, when we talk about reducing the number of precincts, and usually, when you think about consolidating, you think about hardship and having to travel. Most of the consolidation that have taken place under your plan would keep most of the locations still in place, like La Corpul, Woodville, Mud River, Big Ugly, those outlined areas are still there.
Right.
And we're not gonna start this until twenty-twelve, right?
Right. Right. Yeah. We do have our two ballot commissioners that were appointed for the early voting and the absentee, and the Republican, again, is Anita Logan, Democrat, Tammy Roberts. These ladies worked before, so they'll be coming back this election, coming up in October again.
On that early voting, is there any plans to recommend any changes on that? We're gonna try to do any outside county seat.
For this election?
No, down the road.
I'd like for y'all to look into that, maybe. That would help people.
Well, it seems like the people who vote now are only getting close to Hamlin, so we can get it moved out to, you know, Washington District, Arch District. And we believe, or I believe, that more people will vote and go there.
I do, too.
So we just need to think about how we're gonna do that.
Okay.
And I think that will balance out. I think every person needs to have equal access to voting. And I think if you look at the numbers of early voting, people in Carroll District take advantage of early voting at huge numbers compared to outlined areas.
Oh, yes.
I was in support of that. I think that, I would give support of that.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to get that out there, it'd be easier. One thing that Mr. Winton's doing this time is, in the early voting, early voting hours always run courthouse hours, except for, there's two Saturdays, it runs nine to five. He's extending two of the nights, instead of ending at four-thirty, those two nights will extend to six. That way, and we have made note of this to all, especially the poll workers and stuff, that way they can come, there's trainings those two nights, so they could come a little bit early and go ahead, so we won't have so many provisionals whenever we canvass and things. So those nights, it'll be left open a little bit, a little bit later those nights, so I think that'll help, help them a lot. The Casto and Harris, they're the ones who like programs our PEBs and things, they're going to start delivering all PEBs back to county starting next week. So hopefully, we're one of the counties that, that get that next week, because we have planned to start programming next Saturday, so hopefully, we'll be one of the counties to get that. Also, the early voting does start on September twenty-first. We'll start sending out the absentee requests we have on Tuesday. The ladies are going to come in, so they can sign the ballots on that day. Another thing is, the kids, the kids that came this summer and helped us, I want to thank them, we wouldn't have got it done if it wasn't for them. While we're setting in the machines, checking everybody's voter history, we're giving them lists, and they're taking off their address, and they mailed all those out, so those kids was a lot of help.
Every day I come up here, I see seven on there.
Oh yeah. They got tired of it, but they were, they were a lot of help, you know, working with the-
I mean, we sent seven thousand or something.
Yeah, over seventy-two-hundred, yeah. Well, actually more than that, it was seventy-two-hundred inactive letters, and I'm guessing, I'd say another maybe three to four thousand as a reminder to let you know if you haven't voted since 'oh-eight.
So it was just like that.
Yeah. That was the other people I wanted to thank, the post offices have, in the county have been wonderful. They would actually, when letters would go out and were returned and stuff, they would even put on there, this person passed away, this is the year they passed away, if they knew them, or this person moved to such and such state, you know, check this, this person's now in Campbell County, so we found a lot, they were great help with, with us, working with us and doing that and stuff. We do have several drawers, though, I kept all of, you know, all of the letters that was returned, and there, there was quite a bit, but I think a lot of that has to maybe even do with the nine-one-one changes and addresses, that could be, you know, the problem there.
If anyone's interested in some of the work that that office did over the summer, just have Chrissy to show you the letters that came back, there's thousands.
Yes. So, I just, the people who, I know some people had called, some people were, were upset, felt like we were saying, you know, we're removing you, but that's not, that's not our law, that's the state law, you know, and if you don't vote, that's what they have in, you know, that's their process of-
You guys have the laws of law.
Another thing that I've been working with is the warranty on the machines, they do go out the end of September. ESNS is the person who we have the warranty through now. The state was going to try to get it where all counties came together, took the warranty out together. I spoke to the lady at the state, they did not like the contract that was drawn up for the counties.
We're doing it.
I'll make a motion over the Zoom for B. All those in favor of Zoom for B, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have. Let's move to our administrative section, we'll look at A, we have the school volunteers, West Hamlin Raytrium Elementary, anybody have any questions? B is a student from University of North Dakota, an online student performing observation to handle PK three A, I guess that's a study or something like that.
Just on one day, and that I guess-
Is it just one day?
Yes. Please sir, I'm scared.
Okay.
Scary sir.
C is out-of-state travel for Duval students in San Diego, Ohio, expenses paid by the group. D is a supplemental, supplemental education service agreement, that's on the attachment paid for by Title I. Any questions?
Does that have one day? I was like, twenty-nine hundred dollars?
We agree.
Thank you. Travel is free to San Diego.
New Jersey.
It must be really good.
We had him jump streaming with our Kelly back. I'm talking about. He gets right.
You remember we all-
I don't really.
Yeah. Qualitative learning, classroom management.
Thank you. E is out-of-state travel for LCHS students, Cleveland, Ohio, to attend free performance for deaf students, for deaf students only overnight, expenses paid by levy funds. F is out-of-state travel for Lynn County High School, or J-R-O-T-C, and that expenses will be paid by levy funds. G, Brandon Smith, West Virginia State University, performing observation, handling the school for first semester.
Yes, Mr. Smith, I have a question.
Go ahead.
First semester, now, is it now?
A, in agreement with recent, provide tutoring services for the period of November the first through June fifteenth, funded through Title I. Is there any questions regarding the administrative section? If there are no questions, I'd like to have a motion.
I'm ready.
All those in favor of approving administrative section, A through H, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have. Let's move to our financial section. We have scheduled invoices for six-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand-three-hundred-two dollars and sixty-four Do y'all have any questions regarding the-
I have the bills here.
-financial statement.
I have a quick question, you probably know the answer to this. What are these invoices for eight-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars, is for child advocate wage assignment or something, do you know what that is? It gets over here on the bills, it's check number three-six-two-four-seven, Child Support Enforcement Division, have you any idea what that is?
Wish you luck, Iceberg.
I mean, I know that we march you rights and child support, but I would think that we just, as an enforce, I would have thought it would have been some enforcement, but especially-
Yeah.
Yeah.
What was that?
I probably have to never call.
Check, check number three-six-two-four-seven, it's right, almost at the top of the invoices here, on the first page. I'm sorry. It's real, it's passed on to retired teachers.
Black and white, black and white?
Two pages from the back of the invoices. Sorry. Yeah, I just had all the retired teacher stuff turned over.
Wish someone could find out, maybe let us know.
That's what we do.
Okay, that'd be great.
So, if there's no more, if there's not any more questions, will, can we have a motion for finance?
I'll motion.
All those in favor to approve the financial statement, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have. Now we're into, we're entered into the personnel schedule.
Do you remember the doc's case for retirement? We have some additional substitute service positions.
And that was because we included all the interviews, because when we sent them to you previously, we just had not finished all the interviews, fingerprints off their back, that way we were able to put all of the ones recommended on this for aid custodians and cooks.
So all the interviews are finished now?
For, for these, for these positions, yes. We're currently in the process of interviewing for secretaries.
This might go-
We do not have the name to, to send as of yet. And then the last page, one person had taken in, I believe, and then I think the last board meeting, I told you we would be, we removed a couple of names, and we'll be abolishing it, and even though the code is there recently, we did what it was. Is that okay?
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Where are you launching this?
We have to, we will be reposting it if needed. When Mr. Daley talked with us, we are going to post it for him too. He has so much wired pool that he needed more than two years to say. We just want to do it all, post them all again, I mean, before.
Yes, I noticed on B sixteen, Jennifer Wiley, I'm not sure if that's my niece, there's other Jennifer Wiley, so I don't know, I haven't talked to her with her.
Tara, no, it is.
It is, okay. Thank you.
Tara, does anyone have any questions regarding the personnel schedule?
We need to make your vote, I have to stay on B sixteen.
I'm moving to P, accept personnel schedules, we do, what do you want to do, this with exception of B sixteen?
There you go.
Except for B sixteen.
All those in favor to accept personnel schedule with exception of B sixteen, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have.
And now move to accept B sixteen as part of the personnel schedule.
I'll take it now. All those in favor to accept B sixteen as part of the personnel schedule, please say aye.
Aye.
And Ms. Smith extends. I'm sorry, the ayes have. Motion carried. All right, let's go to comments, concerns, food bank for students.
Is it stuck in the stand or?
We had an opportunity to meet with Lee Ann Zappin, she actually works for the Pink and Food Bank. She has received some grant dollars, and what she wants to do is to provide a pantry for the middle and high schools, and provide a backpack club for the elementary schools. And what that is, is that they would actually bring food via semitrade to those schools, and actually provide food for kids only. Parents will show up looking for food, obviously send them to the pantry here in their local area. But how that would look right now is that on Fridays, usually the weekends, we're at a long break, this would kind of ensure that those students that are food needy, she called it, would actually have opportunities to, to have some food. I've spoken with the counselors throughout the county, they're all interested in that, more than likely they will be the directors of this, on the principal's meeting on the eighth, I will speak with them also, let them know what the plan is. She actually wants to get together on the fourteenth and have something in place before we go on Thanksgiving break, because as she said, I can't remember the exact percentage, but it's twenty-plus percent of students in Lincoln County are what they call food needy, and that means even not adequate food, or no food at all, on weekends because of home life, they get parents left home, that type of stuff. So I want you guys to be aware of that, there's a rather lengthy document, it comes in USDA, I was going to bring it up, but you probably would have spent a lot of time reading that, I do have copies of those if you want that, I'll let you know what that's all about. It's at no cost to us, she got a grant, so she'll be purchasing the backpacks, all she needs from us is a place to store the food, and obviously someone to distribute.
Is it perishable?
No, it'll just be canned, for now. There's a model in, in that booklet I have, there's a model that they're using actually in Texas, that actually has a three-point program where they actually do have perishable food, but because we're just starting this, no place to store food, it'll be canned food and food that's actually non-perishable.
Are there any liability issues with this remote-
Don't, don't think so. The one thing I can think of is, again, if you're bringing food into a place, a house, and a student comes to you and says, you know, we're fighting about having food, I don't have any food this weekend, can I get some? They'll fill out, what they do now in Texas, they fill out like a ticket, how many kids they have in the house, the orders filled, I guess, kid gets the food and goes on. We even talked about because of the high school, we actually have that, that late bus, so maybe some embarrassment for some kids at first, they could actually take it home with them. The Texas model actually showed the ROTCs and different types of clubs actually stocking that, and actually being the person that distributes that. Obviously, there's always an adult there to make certain that it's done.
Have you-
I was just going to ask you, I know that you're going to buy food, I know that there's a lot of churches around the area, I know our church, I'm sure there's several churches over at Allen Creek, across the county that probably would like to give, too, I mean, because this is very worthy, and they have food banks already there, so I mean, you could probably get some more food that way, in camp, for that, I mean, if you want to get in contact with some people, and I think you're going to be, I mean, I don't think they would have a problem at all trying to help out some kids.
And I think for the elementary kids, I saw this actually work in Logan County, the backpack club, it was really neat, what happens is, kids actually bring their backpack in on Monday, and it's filled with food, they pick it up on Friday. We need a little program, especially for the elementary kids.
Yeah, be taken, taken on the bus. See any problems with this, those drivers will be aware of this.
Yes, well, again, on the principal's meeting, I'll let them know what's going on, and then again, when we meet with the council on the fourteenth, we'll kind of let them know what the procedures are, and I think that's what Ms. Zappin's going to do, is actually show the procedures, how this works, but we would like to actually list all of it in the, so that the kids are on their long break, have some food. She was telling me, I was really surprised, in McDowell County, forty percent food need.
All right, thanks, Ms. Snodder. And the next thing we have, Flint County Special, Special Events.
And I would like personally to-
All right, so let's go into executive session, we have a motion?
Aye.
Say. All those in favor to go into executive session, please say aye. Regarding personnel, let's say.
Regarding personnel.
All opposed, the ayes have. Non-executive session. And I think that's the last thing on the agenda, Sean, so Sean will want to get out of here.
You can't say bye, Sean.
You ever see any malls on here?
What was that vendor line that you were always working on?